Gonna call this meeting of the Board of Trustees and Facilities Committee to order. It is five oh one. And do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
We do not. What a shame. Alright, so let's go. We're gonna go on and review our Bond Projects update with Mike Morgan.
You notice I don't even say anything. Mike's already here. You got a packet in front of you. I do wanna say I'm super proud of Mike and thankful for his leadership. Steve, David, our entire team that has been working on this stuff. There's a lot of moving parts and there's a lot of good work moving forward and you can thank him for that. I'm thankful for our team.
I'm gonna go ahead and kinda take it off and then in a second I'm gonna ask Steve to come up with it too. Most of the projects we're gonna kinda dig deep are on tonight. Steve is heavily involved in it as members of our other team. So behind me, we have Keith Zilke, Stephanie Ferguson, Sam Skidmore, throughout various elements of these, they've been involved and members of their teams have been involved and the principals that have been involved in this. Particularly for these projects tonight, but Ben Smith and Chris Hobson and Don Schiller. And really thankful for them and I wanna talk about our process because I think it's the process we've been able to go through and that our architects have taken is, I've really been proud of our teams and their willingness to make time in busy schedules to sit down and really talk about the dreams that they have to make these projects come to life and really feel like within the next eighteen months or so, we're gonna see some really incredible things developed for our kids and we're gonna really change some of our campuses, I think, to, for better meet the needs of students and give them a better experience. So, the purpose tonight, uh, next slide, is, um...
You got the clicker.
Oh, do I have it? Okay. Then to talk about schematic designs, I know the full board, y'all received a pretty comprehensive and thorough briefing back last fall on the design elements of elementary's twelve and a little bit about thirteen. And we are gonna spend a little time on twelve and thirteen, talk a little bit about site plans, talk a little bit about some of the, the things that are going on with those projects and kinda next steps. Really wanted to slow down because this will be the first time y'all had a chance to dig deep into the Belton High, Lake Belton Middle School, Southwest Elementary projects and have a chance to really ask questions and see what the functionality of those spaces is most likely gonna look like. Give you a brief update on Delta Program, Ag Facility, land purchases and a couple of the major safety items. And then we will talk about, uh, kind of where, uh, big picture wise we are on budgeting and, and, and estimated expenses right now. And then talk a little bit about timeline on our major construction, addition or renovation projects at the end. So, uh, we could, we could slow this thing down and we could stop and answer questions, have discussion at any point of anything that you're curious about and you wanna know more about. Like I said, um, you know, our, our three, our, our, our three architects that we've worked with on these, these projects, our three different construction managers have been great so far. And then the, the, the willingness for them to let our stakeholders come in. So it hasn't just been principals and directors. We've had band directors, we've had, uh, we've had assistant principals, we've had CTE folks, we've had AG teachers, we've had, uh, our ROTC staff. We've had, uh, um, other, our theater tech, our theater folks at Belton High School. So we've had a lot of different groups in. And I, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our, our, all the other teams, our business office and also our purchasing department and Tammy and Cynthia and the level of involvement they've gotten into to try to make sure that these spaces are, are equipped. And when you talk about addition and renovation projects, it's complicated because you're moving from an existing space to a new space. But there may be equipment, furniture, things in that existing space that you can just move over or reuse. So trying to work out what are we gonna be lacking, what are we, you know, what can we, what can we continue to use, what were the replacement cycles, all these things. So, uh, with the new schools, it's a little more straightforward is building your academy budget out. But with these addition renovations, it's a little more complicated and they really have to roll up their sleeves and get the equipment people that are using the spaces to make sure that, that we maximize our resources. We don't order things we don't need, but we make sure that if we're going to invest in, in new and renovated facilities that they're outfitted so that our kids can have good experiences there. That's kinda, that would be my hope tonight, that you walk away and you got a pretty clear picture of, of what these projects are gonna look like. So, I'm gonna ask, uh, Steve to come up. We're gonna, these are the projects that we're gonna really, uh, look at the schematics on and touch some different aspects and elements of it. But the two elementaries, Burrell Elementary and Hubbard Branch Elementary, and then our, our kind of a first detailed look for you guys of the, the other three projects. So. I'm gonna start with the Burrell Elementary site plan and, and, uh, it felt like, say, this'll just be conversational style. And Steve's gonna kinda kick us off with some of the, some of the things of where we are on Burrell and kind of, uh, uh, just an update on, on how that project's killing.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Uh, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for letting me talk. Um, your two elementary projects were, I inherited, uh, being new to the district in August. So both of these projects were well into design. Burrell was finished in, in, uh, Hubbard Branch, sorry, I go by numbers, twelve and thirteen. Uh, the, the designs were pretty well set. Um, and so this is the, the overall site plan for Burrell. Lane Drive is, is at the bottom of the screen there. Um, there's a driveway, of course, that goes out to the, to the left or the west. So, right here, we've got a driveway connection over to P Ridge. This'll be the bus driveway. The buses come in and drop off, I think, both over here and here. And then you've got, uh, your car riders coming in off of Lane Street and there's two loops, a loading area here and a loading area over there. Any questions on the overall site plan? That road back on the north side, on the backside of the campus, that's this here?
P Ridge?
Well, P Ridge runs north and south, it's over here.
That, that comes in more the middle though, doesn't it? No, you're right, it's over here.
Yeah, so there is a...
What is that road back there? I can't remember the name of it.
I don't know.
Is that the one that's in the construction?
Yeah.
P Ridge is.
P Ridge is being improved right now and Encore's getting their free face power, you know, over there right now. There is a, a phase six of the Northus, Northgate subdivision going in up here. I don't know the timing on that, but there will be a public street that borders the north side of campus. Right now it's just a patch. So our, our public streets will be bladed, which is complete in the front here and then P Ridge over on the side. And then your overall floor plan, Burrell is a one-story structure with six pods, one, one for each grade level. And then the central spine of the campus is where you have all your core facilities with the, the administrative offices in the front here, uh, followed by the library with a makerspace, uh, the gym in the center right here, and then cafeteria and then back to the school. I think one of the, one of the things I understand is a little bit different for Delta and ISB in this floor plan is there, there the square footage is about twenty, twenty thousand more than Charter Oak, elementary eleven. Uh, and a lot of that square footage was, was creating some collaborative spaces, uh, around each classroom pod so that the, the hallways are no longer just circulation, but those can be used as instructional areas as well, uh, complete with furniture, uh, and still allowing for emergency egress. And then you've also got other dedicated spaces, uh, along the central hallways here, uh, for some of your special programs, plus a makerspace and a motor lab. So there's new spaces, well, they're not new spaces to the district, it's, it's new that it's dedicated space. And some of the older campuses, these programs are taking place, but they take up a classroom when they do that, which then reduces your functional capacity at the campus. So while it might have been built for six hundred, you start putting some of the special programs, you start tuning up your general ed classes and now your functional capacity drops, you know, below that. So that creates some challenges. In a fast growth district, it's some challenges when you're trying to balance attendance and review attendance families and things like that. So, this, this is a very functional, very flexible, uh, floor plan, uh, that you got here in, in your new elementary program. It's really good design.
Some of the things I love about it too, and y'all remember, I mean, there's really two, two corridors and then a cross between the gym and the, the gym and the library space. I mean, I mean, almost every area of the school is used for functioning of something. There's not a lot of square footage wasted on, on hallways and big corridors and things like that. So that's, that's one of the things. And then one, if you remember, one of the, the elements that our design committee came up with that had a lot of teachers and parents on it was have essentially located, um, areas that, that all this, Steve, Bobby would use and then having the, the learning pods out on the extremities a little bit more so.
I remember talking about each pod having some of their, some a- a- access to outdoor space. Is any of that, and we talked a little bit about it being like covered. Will that, will there be some covering on some of those?
No, there won't be. That was one of the alternates. And so the, the outdoor spaces will be there and they're gonna be, uh, concrete. So they could be used for outdoor learning. That would be something to come back and look at later if we want to adjust those. So we're talking, yeah, about, so they will have access to those spaces. The spaces will be usable from day one. Uh, we're not going to try to create an outdoor classroom at this point. There's just gonna be some outdoor learning.
But you know, something you could do at a nominal fee would be those canvas covers. You know, like where, where you see the, the smaller area where it kinda goes into the, the, the main part of the building, some of those areas, you could probably put a canvas up there to, to offer some shade, you know? And then because of the way the campus is facing, there's gonna be a lot of shade in those areas because of the, the positioning of the sun different times of the day. But those canvas covers are relatively cheap.
Great. Any other questions on Burrell? There's a, just a next year rendering of the architect's concept and what you see at the main. One thing that I wanna say on this too, I was thankful for our architect partnership with Huckabee and stuff. So you notice, and then one of the things that we're talking about, and I think it's still in this design if I'm not mistaken, is we wanna make a pedestrian-friendly school too because that neighborhood will have a lot of walkers. And so we wanna create from day one, create the right ways for kids to get in and out walking. So that they're not crossing a bunch of traffic all the time. We've had other situations where they're crossing a lot of traffic and it's not easy. So you see in that rendering, you, you should be able to see, that's it right there. You can see from the front of the school, there's a walk out to the street that will be able to get them right on sidewalks in the area as well, so.
Without crossing driveway, you know, our track, you know, our car driveways are interesting.
I, I believe also there's the sidewalk, people go all the way to, to P Ridge and as top of City of Temple, there'll be, it'll connect to sidewalks on the new P Ridge to get those kids to their, to their neighborhood.
And then also you'll have a public street, you know, uh, here directly into this, you know, these, these sections out there. But we did, we did wanna be able to start addressing that right off the bat. We know as our, as our designs have evolved over the past twenty, thirty years, the, the idea of a lot more kids walking to school, uh, is definitely prevalent in some of our communities right now. We wanna make sure that we make it as easy as possible for parents so that they feel good about it, but also for student safety.
And based on the topography of this area, we're not gonna run into the same problem that we ran into at Charter Oak where people are looking literally straight up from their backyard at our school. Isn't this a much flatter area?
It is. And there, there's, actually it's mostly been cut and, and hauled. There's been quite a bit hauled off from the north side.
Lowering this elevation up here.
Yep.
I know that's been a...
That's still a, a sore spot. It is.
I know there's a house for sale in front of this. I saw a comment today about someone not wanting their school in their front yard. So I do know there's a house for sale across the street already. And, and just a quick construction update, uh, we had exciting milestone yesterday. The, the project went vertical for the first time. So we got steel columns standing up in the air. Standing up in the air, yeah. So the, the sequencing right now is they, they poured the foundation for this back, uh, piece right here. Uh, the next foundation floor will be this back, the rest of the back half of the building and that's scheduled for starting midnight Thursday night. If that's Wednesday night, Thursday morning or Thursday night.
You are right, but it's midnight.
I did this, dog. I'll call you when I check it out.
We bought Mike Willoughby's flash aid on the phone so you can see. Yes, yes. And so, and part of that is, uh, they need to get the, the concrete block walls for this gym started as soon as possible because they take a long, yeah, a long time to get up. So there, there's really starting from the back and then working clockwise, uh, through this section and then this. We've got a total of six large overnight concrete floors. We completed one, the second one will be later this week. Uh, with the last concrete floor, they've scheduled sometime in March. And then all the steel framing things.
Now, are we, I haven't seen the finishes of these. Are we still in the polished, or concrete floor and basically and then carpet in the offices, library, that kind of acoustical type areas?
Yes. Okay, Hubbard Branch. Uh, and if I slip and say elementary thirteen, I apologize in advance. This is what I'm gonna do. Uh, this one I had a little bit about. We had just enough time to really study, uh, the site plan and the site design. And when I first came in initially, I was a little bit concerned, uh, about our, uh, what I call our beginning traffic plan because again, this is a developing neighborhood, uh, that's going to look a lot different in several, several years from now. Uh, right now, OT Tyler is here at the bottom of the, of the site plan, uh, and it's constructed up until this, up to this corner right here. Uh, it's, is where the pavement stops. Uh, the, in communication with the developer, uh, they submitted their construction plans to date for the extension of OT Tyler uh, and, uh, for some of these roadways and the sewer line and, and water line, uh, that are planning to serve this site for us. Uh, so they are in to the city of Belton for permitting now. Uh, and they expect to have all of that offsite infrastructure completed, uh, well in advance of when we're gonna need it to open the camps. Uh, but also in a future phase, I can't remember if it's phase two or phase three, but there's another, there's another roadway on the, so, sorry. This plan north is to the right. Uh, west is up actually in this orientation. So to the west over here is, uh, Land Grant. North, north is this way.
So the, so the Academy Road is right here. What is that, four twenty, four, four thirty-six?
Yeah, yeah, four, four thirty-six is, is on the left of the screen there. So if you rotate counterclockwise. Yes, right. I was trying to figure out that.
I can't, I, you win my glasses, I can't read those numbers.
Right. So, uh, initially, when, when I looked at the initial traffic plan, I was a little concerned about the, uh, the queuing here for, for the car riders and the, the parents coming in. Uh, so went over to, uh, Chisum Trail. Picked Chisum Trail because it's, it has our highest enrollment currently. Uh, went into a, a traffic observation over there, pulled car counts, uh, looked like we were serving about ninety to a hundred cars during dismissal period in the afternoon. And so went back to the design team and said, guys, we, we've got a plan for at least ninety cars on the property uh, before we spill out on the street. We need to make sure we accommodate that and we have a good safe system. Uh, and so during the design phase back in the fall, uh, we did widen this driveway here so that we could have a side-by-side queuing uh, as you enter and then it goes single file back here to back and that'll, that'll get us the, the ninety or so cars that we need when this opens on day one. Once land grant is built back here, we also made accommodations. We shifted the, the tension pod to the east a little bit so that we could get a drive, a new driveway in the future that'll, that'll come off of land grant and then come all the way across to give us a, a bunch of queuing across this side of the property. When that, at some point in the future, when that public street is there. So we'll have more than enough queuing and flexibility on how we operate that.
So, so based on this design, if we're looking north, looking at this map, the neighborhood, the phase that's about completed is on the right side?
Correct.
Right over here?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's where the neighborhood, so you see those three streets.
That's right.
And then they're gonna plan another street because there's more development on the other side of our property.
Equal or more houses.
Exactly. So that's what you're saying.
That's correct.
We're, we're almost in the kind of the, the center, the back center of the property. Whenever, whenever all faces.
And, and because of the grade, the topography of this, that's why we went with the two-story designs to have a smaller footprint.
Cor- correct. There's, there's a couple of significant draws or deep gulches right back over here that then I think they ultimately feed down to the Leon. Uh, but this back half of the property right here is, is a lot of steep grade.
Wasn't there, is it Nolan and the Leon that are right behind here?
It's Nolan.
Yeah.
Nolan, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Correct. So we did, we did have enough of a flat area right over here that, that we are, we're gonna leave all of the mature trees in this area, but we're gonna, we're gonna plant some nice turf grass over there so that they'll have a fenced-in field on this side. And then the play areas or the playscapes, uh, with playground, fall protection, all that will be right outside of the classroom wings. And again, you pointed out, thank you, this is a two-story design. So the right half of the building, those classrooms are now directly stacked above the classroom and the ground floor on that side. If, if there's no more questions on this, well, I didn't, sorry, the bus drive will be over here. So the Fed buses will pick up in this blueberry right here and, and the regular red buses will come up the side, do a turnaround in the service yard and then load right here on the side of the building, uh, directly opposite the gym, uh, uh, we have the gym and the, and the library area over there.
And for parents that wanna park and walk up, is that at the very front of the building?
Uh, I would wanna sit down and go through the dismissal arrival processes with the principal and figure out what works best for them. There is a limited amount of visitor parking in the front right here at the front door. Uh, but the bulk of the parking for teachers, uh, for teachers primarily would be in the back. And I suspect because the, the drop off and pickup is in the back here, they may wanna do that park and walk dismissal in the back as well. I, I don't know. That would be my guess if I were the principal, but, uh, we, we haven't sat down yet with the Nolan Heights folks to kinda talk about how they wanna, how they perceive it operating.
So I noticed on the first campus, on Burrell, we had two different play areas on either side of the school. Is this one just gonna have one large play area on one side of the school?
It'll, it'll be even equipment-wise. It'll be, because the learning pods are on both sides, we kinda have it split on this one. All of the play area, all the play areas will be on the side with the classrooms.
Playground, is it playground equipment?
Equipment.
Play area, I guess.
Playground equipment.
Yeah, it's all on one side here.
And then Burrell had them on both sides?
Because, yeah, because of the class. So, and they'll be, they'll be age appropriate. So presumably it's K through twelve, K through second on one side and third through fifth on the other. And so you would, you would size the, the play equipment.
I get it.
And locate it.
And we're gonna, because these are new, it's gonna have all the ADA and all the fall protection and all that stuff. But we don't have to go back later and not do that, right?
I think it's, uh, we appreciate our board's support in helping us with a design process that made this a flexible footprint. I think you can see based on this, while we had fifteen acres, the fifteen acres would've cost us a whole lot of money to actually get some of this if we were to do just a one-story design. But I think your foresight and then giving us the ability to give us a one-story and two-story model that can function very similarly, but have a different look, really helps us out with the amount of land we need for the future on some of these.
I remember when you first got here, you talked about a previous district that you worked in.
Yeah.
And y'all had two-story designs. And we even went and looked at some of those. And as property gets harder to come by, it makes sense to have what Mike from Huckabee did, those guys to, to design the same concepts, but to have them where you can do this.
That's right.
Because of the smaller footprints, I think that gave us that flexibility.
Yeah. I, and I think that, that has played out well for us on this site, I think. I think we would've had a lot of site work to do in a different manner if it wasn't for that. Any other questions on Hubbard Branch site?
What are our estimated completion dates for our one?
That's my question.
Conditions.
We're gonna, we have a, a column at the end. We'll have all six projects on it and then we can, I think, will probably be able to answer that question. We can talk about it.
I don't know.
Uh, just, just a quick run through, very similar floor plan to Burrell, uh, this, on the left is the first floor and then on the right is the, the second floor. So while, while you see these spaces over here, that, that's basically just the tall, tall spaces above. It's those are our occupable, uh, on the second floor floor plan over here. And the architect's rendering of the front entrance for Hubbard Branch.
And that was another thing before you got here, we'd asked them, was to please save as much money on eye candy as possible. Let's make these, well, the community can be proud of, of the, the curb appeal, but let's not go overboard. And I, I think we accomplished that with these by looking at the pictures. I think you've accomplished that.
I, I, I believe so as well. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So, but there's, there's not a lot of...
Have no need to talk for long.
Yeah, yes, correct.
That's good.
Functional space.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
The money flies. Okay, moving on to Belton High School. On the slides here, we, we've indicated draft because, uh, we're in the design development phase on the, on the three major renovation projects right now. And so the floor plans are fairly well set, but there's still, there are still tweaks being made as we meet with each user group each time. Uh, and so, uh, we're, we're just keeping the label draft on here because we, we don't wanna give the impression to anybody that this is what's being built, this is what's gonna be built, because it is still a little bit fluid. As we finish the design development phase over the next month or two, the floor plans will be locked in. I think we'll be to a point where we'll say, this is the floor plan. Uh, the main elements for the Belton High School project were to build a new band hall addition, improve and build an addition and improve the, the career and technology spaces and programs. Uh, and, what else was there?
To find a purpose for the old existing band hall.
Yep.
That would benefit of...
Yep, so reversing the existing band hall. And then we had, there, there were some other pieces of work, specific pieces of work spread across the district and buildings that really amount to major maintenance and capital renewal items. So new air conditioning systems, new interior finishes, et cetera. And so one of the first things that I did was sit down with Mike in the beginning and, and sort of cherry picked those major items of work that were gonna occur at the same location where we had major capital improvement projects so that we can bundle those together. So in the Bond Program, there are line items in different locations that are actually grouped and part of this Belton High School project. So there, there's some roof replacements that are, that's in our scope of work, uh, with Core Construction and Annika Robertson. There's HVAC system replacement, there's seventy dollars in interior finishes and things. So it's not just that... The idea is you wanna, when you got major construction going on, you might as well take care of all this at once. It's gonna be a lot more efficient, you get better pricing when you bid it because it's a bigger project.
I remember when we were putting our thoughts together to, to give the information to the Bond Committee, walking that high school, there was always the thought of major renovations to the inside to make, because of the new styles of learning and, and collaborative areas and things like that, I knew there would be some interior things to, to go on.
And I mention that because when we start bringing GMPs to the board, um, on this project in April, I think there's gonna be a total of two GMPs. The total project costs that you're gonna see in there are not gonna match up exactly with what was in the original Bond Program because we picked some pieces out of different locations in that list of, of work, uh, and blended them together. On, on Belton High School, Lake Belton Middle, Annika Robertson, rubber roof replacements, HVAC replacements, interior.
I remember when we had that, the analysis, remember when they had that, the, the different people come in and do the different looks for all of our facilities? They sectioned Belton High School into, was it four or five different roofs? And is it one or two sections that needed?
Yeah, it's two sections.
Two sections, right.
Yeah, a lot of it was replaced within the last five years or so. This was the remaining portion that it was.
Yeah, I think actually the most recent Google satellite chicken gets very clear which, which two sections of roof replacement.
The, the Annika Robertson team too had a good approach with, with the interior finishes, knowing we're not gonna be able to touch every square foot of a three hundred sixty thousand square foot building with money we had. So they walked the building with, with members of the VHS team, kinda took in all the different ideas and will come back with kind of a menu of what kind of, where we can come back and prioritize based on highest need and what we can afford to, to address as many things as we can on those, knowing that, you know, it won't be a full, uh, a full, you know, top to bottom, head to toe renovations.
So based on the look of these new and renovated areas here on this site, on this site map, are we gonna get the, the bids done on those and then see what we have left? And see what projects are on that list for the interior of old Belton High School? That's kind of the sequence?
Yeah, that's a great question. We're, we're, we're actually strategically, what we're trying to do, one of the reasons why we bundled all three of these, uh, awarded the, the CM contract, was to try and get the best overall value with, with the largest project. Because these are all very difficult renovation projects on very old, not very old, but pretty old campuses. Just gonna go back to Southwest. So, so they're, they're dirty projects which are very expensive from a renovation standpoint, particularly in, in the challenging market likely right now. So we're trying to, uh, keep all three projects on the same design schedule so that, so that our construction manager has the opportunity to bid this as one big project, even though it's in three different locations. Uh, and so what we, and, and so strategically right now, we've got a schedule where we're, we're gonna ask for approval of GMP number one for Belton High School and Lake Belton Middle School and Southwest Elementary in April time. And then we'll come back with final GMP a month or two later. Um, and by that time, we'll, we'll have definitive pricing on all of those elements. Uh, we've got good schematic design estimates right now and we've got good, uh, and we're coming up on, on the threshold where the architect is producing a lot more detail now that the construction manager will go back and do a design development estimate. And so those numbers will get defined. Um, and... And fortunately on that one hundred thirteen project, those numbers kept coming down with each, each estimate, you know, from where we started. And so, in that, overall, we're, we're gonna get everything designed that was described within the bond program. We're gonna get it all priced out in the market, and then we'll come back and take a look at, at where we are physically overall. But so far, it's, it's not horrible.
We had an idea, wasn't it in the thirties?
Yeah, it's gone up, but we'd also planned for some escalation costs and all of that. And that gave people sticker shock at the beginning, but boy are we glad we planned for some escalation costs and all of that.
Because the market media, they pass it.
So, here's the good news and the bad news, based on where we are, and they'll talk you through this in a little bit. I feel so much better about where we are at Belton ISDs and put some other districts, and they've had to go out for an additional bond election to finish the project, and they gone over in the previous bond election because costs escalated so much. We're not in that boat, and I'm thankful for that. But your point, your question was a really good one about some of these things like interior finishes at Belton High School. Yeah, we're, I mean, there, there's gonna be give and take on some of the things, but what we don't want is we don't want to say, you know, we were gonna try and do some interior finish things, we're not gonna do any interior finish at Belton High School. That would be, that'd be shooting ourselves in the foot. So, we have to see how this all plays out. Right now, it's looking positive for us, that we're gonna be able to do the significant things that we outlined in the bond program, and we're gonna keep creating these partnerships and that ongoing dialogue between our team and theirs to, to try and get it done.
And I know this is petty, but it came under the request of the principal of Belton High School. I walked with him over a year ago, and hopefully there'll be enough in the, the project funds to do some updating on some landscaping and some eye appeal to the outside of the campus. You could tell based on the type of bushes and trees and kinda how things have moved, he would like to see it be, from a pride standpoint, when, when people see the campus. So hopefully there'll be some monies there. They even talked about getting a new marquee, things like that. You know, I don't know about all that, but I just wanna put that in your brain, that that was something that was talked about, was we'd like to have an update on the look outside too.
I think the, we want people to feel proud about walking through the halls of Belton High School.
Yeah.
Walking in the building, walking through the halls. And so, we will not have enough money to do everything we want, but we are gonna do everything we can to make it feel great right now. And so, what work with the school is we see these construction costs and what it actually comes down to. I agree with you. Like you are, you pull in the front of that building, you pull in the front of some others, it'll feel, and so whatever we can do, we can do. And to that point, back in October, just as part of our process, O'Connell Robertson, our, our design architect for Belton High School, has an in-house team dedicated specifically to interior design for all their projects. And that team came out and walked the entire campus for, I think they spent two or three hours, and when they walked in with the principal over there talking about and getting input and feedback from them about what they like and what they don't like and what they wanna change and what they, you know, their vision for how they wanna improve the entire campus. And so they, the, the design team is taking that information right now, processing it, coming back in the design development phase with suggestions on how they might best address that within the dollars that they're putting in the office for that element. So it's, it's all, again, it's in process, but that's kinda where we are, and those are some of the steps we've taken to make sure that, that we're hitting all of those things. What's the immediate needs rebuilt in the bond? Yeah, so real quickly then, so here is where the existing band hall is. The new band hall addition is going, is proposed on the back corner over here where we've got some portables that's directly across from the swim center. The old band hall would then be repurposed and serve as a theater tech classroom and black box theater performance space, which is a very specific performance space in Indiana Valley over at Lake Belton High School right now, but we don't have one specifically dedicated here at Belton High School. And then on the CTE additions, we're starting back in the, in the back half, or back corner of the, the building over here, that would be the southeast corner. So north is down on this one. Part, part of the elements of this were, were to try and rid of some of these older, maybe less functional, maybe would've been originally temporary buildings that became more permanent over here, and, and get some better, more up, up to date instructional spaces. And so, through a series of schematic design meetings with Stephanie Ferguson and, and the campus staff or campus administration over there, what the architect came back with and we ultimately accepted is, is a, a building addition in what we're calling Phase One of new instructional spaces, and I'll get into the floor plan here in a minute. And then we would cut back in this existing career and technology or CC building here, and we're proposing, we're, we're gonna basically gut that building end to end and reconfigure it and, and restructure it. And then there would be a, a Phase Two element that would be a future bond that would then connect this building addition with the CC building physically, with the two story addition here, that would then come in and replace some of these elements earlier, basically the ag shop and the ROTC, armory and, and firing. And so, what this looks like, we'll start with the band hall addition here. So on the back corner of the building, kinda directly across from the swim center, I mean, this is just your district standard, your band hall ed spec template, very similar to what you have at Lake Belton High School. You've got the, the band hall space here, you've got a couple of ensemble practice spaces here, one for percussion and one, one's for, for just your band ensemble, band storage area. One of the things that, that's a little bit different, that was, that was done with feedback from the band director, Barry Sisson, is we, we took some of the square footage, we reduced the total quantity of individual practice rooms and traded that square footage for a second, smaller ensemble space to where, because it fit, and Keith, you might be able to, to help me out on some of the, some of the reasonings behind that, but I think they wanted a little bit more flexibility in how they break out the different band sections to do smaller group instruction.
Yeah, they, they really wanted the larger ensemble room, more as a jazz band room, and then a smaller ensemble room to do more of the solo and ensemble aspects of their curriculum.
So we didn't really grow the square footage of the overall band area. What is it? We just sort of repurposed how some of that space was used to better fit the instruction and, and, and for what they're doing over there now.
You don't square footage is of that band hall?
No, not off the top of my head. I've, I've got the, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Oh, and then we've got a dedicated colored up storage area right here. I think they're using, using.
It's a really small room right now.
Really small room right now. Uh, okay. This is the existing Belton High School band hall snapshot, kinda zoomed in, but the orchestra addition that was built several years ago was right down here toward the bottom, off the edge of the page actually. And then, all right, so the existing band hall would be chopped up a little bit, divided, so we have a black box or theater tech classroom space here. We have finally a dedicated costume shop, which is, which is also part of, part of the curriculum, I think, isn't it? Some of the costuming and.
Yeah.
Things that they do and the, the props and things that they create along with the costume. And then some storage space and dressing rooms and those, those typical support, support spaces that you have for a black box performance space, the makeup areas, the dressing room, et cetera. And so the black box performance space, the, the dash line here would be the, the hanging curtain over above that you can configure to do theater and around, and this is a very flexible, small performance space.
So, the costume shop, is that gonna be also an area where they can work on props too? Don't, don't, don't they need a prop construction area? I know Lake's got that.
The costume shop as designed right now would be more specific, I mean, you're gonna have tables in there for the design of the costumes.
But weren't we talking at one time about having them an area to do their prop construction?
We were. Right now, the construction shop at Lake really isn't big enough for them to build props. They do that on stage or outside. I'm hopeful that maybe in the future, the, the little theater, we can address making that the shop. But this gives them a lot of area to do the costume on the right, and they can use the floor space of the black box to do some of their prop building.
Okay. Just remember we kinda talked about that.
All right, moving over to the CTE building addition. Here we got where, whoo. Here we're coming off the back of the building, so the red table area outside the cafeteria is just over here to the right in this floor plan. And so here in the, the yellow floor area, the floor plan is, is the new culinary arts kitchen and, and instructional spaces along with a cafe space that, that's really a multi-purpose, multifunction. It's an area that can be used for instruction, it can be used for meetings, it can be used for serving in a restaurant style.
They have a little one already, right, like that.
So this, this expands on that, and Stephanie, please jump in if I say anything incorrectly or if I miss, miss anything super important.
The, the thing that's really interesting about it is when you see the whole way out of the school, it's right across that courtyard from the cafeteria too. So if you do want to, if they, as part of the program, if they do want to, when they offer teacher staff meals, it's convenient, but if they, if they do get into wanting to have a, a student type meal or an organization have lunch over there, whatever, it's really convenient compared to.
What would be interesting to know, maybe the next time we meet, would be, how much are we growing in square footage for the culinary, because they have such a small area, and this is what square footage is now, this is what the new one's gonna be. I'd like, I think I'd be need to be able to tell people, we've grown it by this much?
Absolutely. So, one, one of the things that O'Connell Robertson has done a fantastic job of from day one, they, they took our original bond program, because we had the spaces described in program requirements, X number of this many square feet, and they compared that against our ed spec, which, which was adopted back in fall by the district. And so we're, we're very, we're on par with what the ed spec has, so the culinary square footage in Lake Belton High School should be very similar, I hope. Ideally, it's gonna be on par with the ed spec. Now, we've had, and I'll, I'll just mention, we've had a series of meetings, two or three now, two, two hour meetings with the culinary coaches at Belton High School, and each time things are growing just a little bit, just, just to make it work and, and get it right where they, they really want it. And so I did, this floor plan, actually after the meeting we had a week, week and a half ago, this wall and these classrooms right here is probably gonna come out a little bit to where it's just a single, instead of a little bump out of the kitchen, it's just gonna be a straight line. Just because as we dove into all of the details of the kitchen and each piece of equipment and the workers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it's just becoming clear that we're a little too tight. And they were actually at a point, they were heading, trying to be very judicious, they were, they were at a point in the group discussion where they were ready to eliminate one of the classrooms in order to accommodate some of the stuff they're trying to do. And then I sort of pulled them back a little bit, said, hang on a second, if you're gonna grow the program, how many sections do you have? And I mean, it, it became clear that we gotta have at least two instructional spaces up there. So that's, again, as we work through the DD phase, things are still a little malleable from the floor plans. Moving along with, yeah, we gotta clear it up. The blue areas here are the audio video, audio visual classrooms, and one of the reasons this is in the building addition is because it's out in the CC building right now, and once we get that to repurpose it, we gotta replace those and, and get them back in here. So this'll, this'll keep all the audio video right here together in this side of the building. And then the green area right here is your ROTC classrooms, dressing rooms, general storage and office spaces. And then in the, in the future Phase Two, we would go ahead and bring the armory and the firing range into the urban building addition and eliminate the facility that's in right now. But, but once this addition is done, the classrooms in here, but the armory and the firing stay out in the existing building right now. And then the ground areas are just the restroom and support spaces.
So are we gaining a lot more space for our Tiger Media people?
I believe so.
I would so, and.
And dedicate space to. And I'll tell you, that is one user group that as we were going through the design development when we met with them for the very first time, that was one user group that for me it was very clear that, that they have sort of been locked in to their box right now. And was really, we were, the architect was asking them questions, okay, well, if you could start from the beginning, if you could do this, you know, or how are you doing it? Well, we do it this way, because that's just what we have. That's all we have, that's all, you know. And just breaking that paradigm, that, that, that vision of, this is the way we do it, because that's all we have. It's like, well, now you're gonna have a brand new space, how do you want, how, how would you do it, what would you do differently to better serve the kids and to, to better improve the structure of the program? So it was hard to crack that nut with them and get them to start vision.
Well, he's, he's not a very crispy person, but he's a really nice man. But what, a couple of years ago when my daughter was in Tiger Media, that's why I'm asking, is something that I hold close, and Mark is phenomenal at what he does. But I'm pretty sure that if you looked at all the sports and all of our extracurricular activities, we probably had more Division One representation that was at a college doing something in audio visual, Tiger Media type stuff than we had in any other sport, band, choir, I don't know about the band, but we probably had more D one representation cooked two years ago when my daughter was in there. So I was really hoping that we could up the ante for these guys, because they do so much for our school, for this side of the, of the river now.
I, we're, we're almost there with them, I think. It's, it's.
And we're still gonna be controlling the Friday night lights from this facility just like at the.
That's, that's. All right. The CC building renovation, again, this is a, this is a element of the project where, where we will start from one end of the building and go to the other and reconfigure it. And what we're doing is concentrating the, if we will, the wood shop, for lack of a better term, along with the construction trades program. So there'll be a shop on either end of the building, and then in between, we've got a vet tech classroom and lab, and then the instructional support classroom for each shop. And then an ag classroom here in the center, and then along with our ed spec and, and some of the likely elements we had at Lake Belton High School, the man, the architect has also put in an office and a, and a think tank space here, so that's kind of a group, small group collaboration, faculty workspace collaboration. Stephanie, anything missing?
I think we hit it on.
And then. To be clear, that's the current building that is being redone.
And then one, one element, I don't have a floor plan drawing on this, but, but the other critical element that we have to resolve as part of this bond program is to go back into the ag shop and get the, the exhaust and the welding stuff upgraded maybe over there and get it going. Even though it's, you know, the vision is to create a permanent new ag facility or ag shop that connects this building to the building addition we're talking about in a future bond. Right now, we gotta get the instructional space back into production, so we've included that. Just a couple of the architect's renderings, this is the, the red table area over here, so part of this project also proposes putting a cupboard over the existing seating that's out there right now, and cafe would be back here behind. That's the CTE building addition from the parent loop on Tiger Drive. That's the band hall addition, as you're looking at it from the student parking area, looking backwards, Belton High School. I'm sorry, any other questions on Belton High School? Okay, I got it. All right, Lake Belton Middle School, primary elements of this project work. A new band hall addition so that we could also have a permanent, proper instructional space for the orchestra program in addition to a, a new band hall for the band program. And then there's an existing portable out here that has pre-athletic, off the back of the building here, pre-athletics and a train room in there. This bond project brings all of that into a permanent building addition and get rid of that portable out here behind the building. And then one other element that came up that we're gonna be addressing in this project, and I'll talk about it in the floor plan in a minute, is this courtyard area. This is a, as you know, this is originally an intermediate school that, that was then added on to at least once or twice and converted to a middle school over the course of time. In doing so, the pathway from the main building, the main academic areas out to the gyms has the students either walking through the cafeteria or coming out a hallway, going outside an exterior building to the courtyard, which is fenced in right now, and then coming back into the building. And it's, it's always been, this courtyard's been an issue for the campus for, for many, many years, and it's even a bigger issue now with some of the new TDA requirements for safety and security of the school. So part of this will also be doing a permanent corridor. So part of this will also be doing a permanent corridor addition right here that that makes, you won't have to go outside the building anymore. You can come down the hallway, turn the corner, you're still in the hallway, you can go back to the gym. Again, here is the band hall addition on the left. Again, this is your standard middle school, D I S D, ed spec band hall. You got rehearsal space, you have an ensemble practice room, office, music library and some small practice rooms here. One of the things that came to mind, which I thought was pretty interesting, I haven't seen this before in middle school, it made a lot of sense, the band director, we've got actually two instrument storage. Normally in the band hall, there's one big room. One of the things that came out in our design development discussions was it is so hard to get all of the band kids in and out of that door in a short amount of time and go pick up their instruments. It would be really helpful if we could split the instrument storage on opposite sides of the room. So I thought it was very interesting, I hadn't seen that before. And I think that's going to work out really well, I can, I see their point exactly.
So there's the orchestra addition, is that in what is currently the band hall?
That's correct. So the orchestra area here on the right, that is the existing band hall and the pinky sherry there. And it's just, we're just reconfiguring a little bit to serve the orchestra program, which is now basically a two standard classrooms over there. The district's largest middle school.
Yes.
Orchestra program.
It might be one and a half classrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they keep storage in how about at other.
Yeah, that's right. So I think based on the feedback I've had so far from the principal, the band directors over at Lake Belton, they're they're really excited. Sorry. Okay, and then the, what we, what we ended up coming up with, the we, the design architect, as we were studying the different options. The most efficient and best approach is that the the existing locker room configurations are over here on the right. And I'm sorry, it doesn't show quite as well in here, but you got boys athletics here and girls athletics here right at the moment, and then you got pre-athletics out in a portable. We got just the perfect square footage to come in here and actually carve up the existing girls athletics and create a pre-athletics locker room and a training room, and then just build a new girls athletics facility in the end, right down here. It's going to be, we think, both from a construction manager, architect, and architect standpoint, the most efficient way. So it's a little bit different than what was described in the bond program. We weren't talking about building a borough athletic locker room. But based on the way this works, I think it's going to be really efficient solution here.
So when you say a training room, is that going to be.
Athletic training.
But is that going to be a place where there'll be a little bit of rehab?
Yeah.
Taking tables.
It'll it'll be almost identical to the ones at North Belton and South Belton. It's a one trainer setup with our student trainers that has indoor and outdoor access, like get to the football field or to the gym or to the, to out, right out to the weight room, the way Lake Belton set up. So it's going to be really.
I'm going to jump back real quick to the site plan. The other thing that's really important element is that the the main gym, which is here, and then you have your practice gym over here. The restrooms and concessions are need needed restrooms, maybe member restrooms over there. And so that's the other element in the athletic addition here. And so the right half of this addition is the new girls athletic lockers and coaches office. And then we've got public restrooms for the main gym. And what this does is right now the campus uses the opposite of the north side of the building for as the public entrance to the main gym. This is going to flip it over to the to the south side of the building. And so you'll have the new, the main entrance right here, concessions area, restrooms, and we'll have a pair of basically security zoning doors right there to hold the public at the gym side, and then the student side is back over here. The other thing this does is it gets the boys coaches that are currently in an office way back in the back of the auxiliary gym. Gets all the coaches back over here into the locker area.
Interesting thing, Sam.
And then just, there's a architect's concept of the band hall addition as seen from the parent drop off area and then the concept plan for the new main entrance. All right, Southwest Elementary. So the current main entrance is, here is Saunders Street, and here you're a little within, and the current main entrance is right here. The primary elements of this project were to add ten instructional classrooms in order to expand capacity by a hundred students and get rid of as many of the portals as possible that are currently in use over there. And then also to replace the existing gym. And so I think PDK initially came up with a couple of different floor plan concepts. This is the one we settled on because it's very compact, it's very centrally located in the building, it meets all the elements of the project and it has the least amount of square footage. The other one had some long corridors, there was a lot of square footage in corridors and not in classrooms, it wasn't quite as efficient of a layout.
This is the one that staff liked the best, too.
This is the one that staff liked the best, that's correct. So we got the, the, we've got a two-story addition with five classrooms on the first floor and five on the second floor plus on the first floor and art room and music room. And then we've got a gym addition coming off near the back of the kitchen area, cafeteria. And then in between there right now, we've got a professional learning space and a faculty break running session. So the classroom addition here is modeled after the template that was developed when y'all worked with Huckabee on the new elementary for Burrell and Hubbard Branch. And so what you have is is a a pod of five classrooms with a corridor space that's actually about eighteen feet wide, not the same distance. So you've got that same collaborative and learning area in the, right outside of the classrooms, both on the first and the second floor here. And that was really important to Principal Schiller over there. We had a lot of discussions about that, and so we we've modeled this floor plan very closely after what what we're building currently right now at Burrell and Hubbard Branch. The gym is is your district standard gym with office, restroom for the students there, the gym and and storage area. Pretty straightforward. And then we've got a prefer professional learning area there for the, where the faculty can gather for for training and meetings. It is, so we're a little over on our square footage here right now. And so one of the things that we're going to hold out as sort of a menu option is is maybe this. When we added the square footage in the corridors here, it comes out to about the same amount of square footage as this right here. And so the PLC in the break room might be something that we have to look at alternative solutions if if we're running the budget problems on this one. In other words, maybe we're, we won't be able to build a, as a permanent space right now, but we can repurpose an existing square footage in the building is one of the things we're looking at or possibly, excuse me, have that in portable for a little while, I'm I'm not sure yet.
I don't think a portable will be an option. Southwest, we're going to, we're going to get rid of portables in Southwest. So that's one of those things that we hear often is that, well, I don't want to lose this space, we're going to keep this. We're not going to keep the portable, it's a sad.
Here's an architect's concept for the neighborhood or collaborative space outside the classrooms, what it'll work like.
Do we, how big, how big a sections do we have over there for each grade? What, do we have one with four, five? I mean, you have five and five, is it going to be, is there like enough fifth graders to do up and fourth graders down?
I think if I remember right, they've got a bigger, is it fourth grade than they have the other grades? So yeah, I I do think so. I think in the future with those attendance boundary changes that we're going to be proposing in the future, I think we'll definitely have the ability to have five sections.
The model we want to go to is is six by five, so six grade levels with five sections of each grade level.
I think, and I think we have one right now that has that, but I don't think all of the grade levels have that.
And then last, last slide here on Southwest is the architects, this is, this would be the gym addition here, and this would be the two-story classroom addition here.
So, and here's a picture of the gym from like the, the.
Street level.
Street level over by the cafeteria side. This would be the classroom wing level, kind of looking at it from the, from the backside of the building. So prior to updates quickly on these is is we have a board action back in December as we chose an architect for both these Delta project and ag facility expansion. Our first meeting with stakeholders is this Thursday, so our ag teachers will be meeting with the architect for the first time this Thursday. And Stephanie, members of their thirteen, and members of Belton High, Lake Belton High will be about it as well. But primarily, we want to get input from our ag teachers on what they envision in a hog and poultry facility and then potentially some other great sort of current facility. On land purchases, we are still active, looking throughout the district for future school sites. And it's been kind of informative going through some of our preliminary work on the tennis boundary process and then demographers information and talking with developers and things like that to try to make sure that we we target specific areas where we think are, will be in the range of where our next schools are going to need to be here in the future. Safety and security upgrades, we have a some preliminary pricing back on safety vessels. Preliminary design has been done in working with the architect. And we hope to, our plan would be to move forward with with funding for those projects and start construction as soon as school's out. And then our playground accessibility and safety, we have gotten our preliminary pricing back on that. And we have a little bit more work to do in that procurement process. And and our hope would be is as soon as school's out that we start, start construction of all of the different playground renovations too. So to go back to Ty's question from earlier about the new schools, will everything have accessibility and fall protection? The answer to that is yes. And our plan is at the end of this playground update, there are safety, our safety and security funds. Every, every elementary school and Vex in our campus would have access to, access to all equipment and fall protection in all equipment. So that's, that that will be the the district standard at that point. We wanted to put a slide here about cost estimates, so we can have a brief discussion about cost estimates. Matt hit on it earlier that we do feel like for pricing that was primarily put together in October of twenty twenty one, we we are in a in a fortunate position for the most part. Elementary thirteen is, as construction costs have continued to rise at about two percent per month.
Still.
We had, we had planned on about twelve percent growth during that lab time, but twenty is, it's going to be a little higher than that. About it's going to be somewhere between sixteen, eighteen, maybe even as much as twenty. But still, we're in a lot better shape than than lots. So it's, it's, we we seem to have estimated it pretty well on our F F and E costs, the preliminary pricing, we're getting back on that and being within the ballpark. So we think that as we come to y'all with more information and GMPs throughout, starting in February and throughout the spring, that, you know, we we feel like we're in a, in a pretty favorable position as far as where we're at. It's going to be some work to do, and we are going to be over on some projects, but we're going to do everything we can on some others to to maybe find some cost effectiveness. And if we do get to a point, make good choices, we'll, we'll.
And for the, for the Delta facility, you're looking, if you were to go and do construction, two acres approximately?
Probably so. As we're, we're kind of with the the lack of results that we've had, trying to find existing commercial buildings. A new build on one of our existing properties, we're going to go through a process with our architects' help to look at the best sites that we have and try to determine which one we might propose.
I don't know the functionality of our Second Street property, but that was twenty something acres that we, that they bought years ago and the hags taken up whatever. Is there enough functional space on the Second Street property to put a facility over there for this?
I think there's, there's possibilities.
I know that property is weird, there's a creek back there that could be alarming for.
Yeah, I know what we need, but.
But I just wondered about, that is a good spot though, we have acreage there.
It is, but we have to also remember ag facility expansion and expansion of number of students accessing that too. So yes, I think acreage wise, we probably have some some wiggle room there, functionality wise, I'm not so sure.
It's not a good marriage of.
Not necessarily on that one, but still on the table, there, everything is still on the table. We also have, and Mike brought this one up, I didn't even realize this, we have some acreage attached basically to South Belton Middle School that we could consider as well over there.
On the south side of the building? How much is that west?
Several, I mean, and it has access to two streets, so plenty, plenty to build this facility, but we're talking about eleven, twelve thousand square foot.
We also have some property with current facilities on them, on Sixth Street and stuff, where we have Wilson-Kersey Field and some property right there in front. So we have some things to discuss, a lot of it would be change. But when we think about program and what we're talking about for that Delta program facility, we want to think about the location, the access that allows kids to access community services as well. And so those are the types of things that we have to take into account in making those decisions. We have, I use our bus barn as an example, let's say we have another two acres on there. We probably wouldn't necessarily want to put it just next to the bus barn. Why? We actually want, as part of that eighteen plus program, the Delta program, you want to teach students how to to live and and breathe in the community that they they're in. And so we'll have to continue exploring those options, but I think at least we have some land and some adjacent areas to take a look at.
What is our footprint at Wilson-Kersey? I don't know, football field is basically an acre, do we have a little over two acres there? What do we have?
We do, and we can pull that up. Do either of you have access to our facility log, the ones being updated there?
It's something to consider too, and I know we're going over, but something to consider when we look at the Sixth Street thing is the city of Belton has a plan put in place for a big deal on Sixth Street in the future.
Yeah.
Something to consider on that too, it 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 could be a really good place.
Absolutely. And it's a, it's an interesting one, tough one for us too. I love the fact that we have soccer teams playing on natural grass there at that, at that older stadium. That being said, long term, I don't know if that's a long term discussion that we're ready to say we're fully committed to keeping that as an athletic field or not. So we've got to, we've got to make those determinations. And we we have some options, which a lot of districts don't have, so we're excited about that.
And finally, some construction timelines to Susan's question from earlier. So you can see the the major construction or addition or renovation projects, our estimated construction project timelines. The the one thing, you can see that we anticipate that by summer of twenty twenty four, having all projects completed and ready to move in. So we went ahead and extended BHS in Lake Belton Middle School back to to end of August just to give us a little bit of time if we need some extra move in time at the end. But we fully anticipate that when the twenty twenty four school year starts, that we'll have all of our A and R projects done and and obviously we'll have our our elementary constructions done as well. So the one thing that's a little different on this is I, there's kind of a, you see the, the Burrell timeline, it's kind of black and lime, is we know when our contractual completion, we we have been working really hard with our team to see if there's any way to start building that back, it's it's anywhere where there's lead time and you have those sorts of things to have that back as as early as possible. So that's going to need to be something that's a decision's made on very quickly because we could have some tennis boundary school opening, stacking, all those types of considerations considered as well.
And I don't see the ag facility on here, based on where it's located and kind of the budget and the type of construction that that is. I mean, we should be able to get going on that pretty soon, shouldn't we?
Once we can get construction documents ready, and it's probably going to be a sealed proposal, so I mean, we think, we're thinking that, you know, it's got to kind of depend on how quickly we can get all of our stakeholders together and start getting that lined out, get some, get some design and some documents.
Yeah, so when we had, when I had, we held our initial programming meeting with both the Lake Belton and the Belton folks. We talked a little bit about project timeline and basically, you know, when animals started, starting to show up in the summer, over the summer, we knew that we weren't going to be able to get the, those improvements completed by May of twenty three. And it just, it doesn't significantly help them during their show season to try and open, complete it and open it up in the middle of the year or middle of the school year, middle of the show season, or at least the show season, it's actually more disruptive. So we felt like we had a little bit more play in there, but yeah, I mean, overall project time, particularly if it's going to be at Belton Building, is not going to be, there's not super long lead times. We don't have a firm schedule set up yet.
I mean, some of it, but we can get from the ag. What disrupts those animals the least, you know?
I just have a quick question, have we talked about what's going to happen to the middle, right, structure, what's going to happen with that building?
That is not something we're talking about yet. That's something the board will have to talk about, about what you you all would like. There's, could be a repurposing of that building, there could be a sale of that building, it could be, that could be level that building and build something else there. So there's a couple of different options that we have, but that'll be a more decision as we progress in building and progress.
Do we know the acreage offhand of?
That's off the six. It's a little less than eight acres.
Comes off of six.
Eight acres.
Oh, no, no, not off six, I was thinking about Miller Heights.
Yeah, Miller Heights is there. Six is two.
Yeah, I I wrote that down, so we're going to follow up since you're on the line, so let me look it up.
Any other questions?
I will say this, at the Morel timeline, had a good meeting with our construction manager and our architect. And I believe everybody's trying to work to get that school open as quickly as possible, so we'll keep, we'll keep working on that.
Red lines, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the challenge is, is they know and they understand us from a community point of view. Open it in August is always the best thing to do, realistically, we probably won't be able to open it in August. So, our team has to come up with different solutions for the fall of twenty-four and what that might look like. Y'all know that as a board, because that is change, and not ideally change, but that being said, I feel good about where our partners in this process are and where our admin team is, and we'll come up with the best plan we possibly can.
The Derns are having a bunch of rain to worry about, slowing things down.
It's been dry.
It was pretty wet last month.
While we were.
I don't even remember that.
Any other questions? All right, so, six, twelve, we're done. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
This is why we should never cancel facilities meeting.
I do wanna point out that our policy committee meeting, the members told me to tell you all that they were done in twenty-five minutes last night.
We're not impressed.
Can't never could.